Welcome to the City of Oak Harbor Planning Commission Meeting for September 28, 2001. Due to COVID-19, this will be both a physical meeting, location and a virtual meeting per Washington Proclamation 20-28. Meeting may be viewed live via YouTube. To leave a public comment that will be made part of the meeting record, please call and leave the message at For short of business, I'll call roll call. We have Commissioner Southard here, Marshall, Stuckey, and myself, Bruce Freeman, the Vice Chair. First order of business is approve the minutes of August 24, 2021. I need a motion and a second.
I make a motion to approve the many minutes from August 24, 2021.
We have a motion to approve the minutes of...we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none? We'll move to the second order of business, public comment. This is...Planning Commission will accept public comments for items not otherwise on the agenda for the first 15 minutes of the Planning Commission meeting. There are no citizens in their audience, so no calls. So I'll move on to the first order of business, which is public hearing. The CBD zoning code is the public hearing. Associate Planner Ray Lindenberg will present the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the members of the Planning Commission. I'm going to give a very brief presentation tonight. We've already seen this item a few times, and I don't want to beat it to death at this point, but we do have some minor changes that we're going to be making to the Central Business District Code, and that was a code that we reviewed extensively over the past year 2020, and then was approved in early 2021. And we realized that there were some minor changes that needed to be done. So I'm going to share my screen with a slideshow here real quick. Let me get that started for you. Sorry, I've got too many screens here to look at. Okay, can everybody see that? We're looking good. Okay, so what we have is a Central Business District, and like I said before, we made some changes to it. The original changes were to simplify the zoning regulations within that district, to cut down on the number of uses and try and make things a little bit more simple and clear. That effort was after a moratorium on certain kinds of development in the Central Business District. The changes to the code itself were approved, like I said, in January of 2021, the first meeting of that year. And like I said, those changes focused on clarity, community desires, permitted uses, and some dimensional standards that were located in the Central Business District. Now, that approved code language achieved the intent of those original key criteria. The key points of concern that were for development applications were adjusted. However, minor changes that did not make the final draft were through a staff error. And fortunately, those changes were not significant, didn't create any situations where we had a bad outcome or anything like that, so it wasn't of grave concern, but we did want to come back to you and get those corrected tonight. All presentations made to the Planning Commission and the City Council include the elements that were shown in the intended version of the code. For some reason, we just accidentally presented the wrong version that didn't have all of those intended changes, and so there are some minor changes that we're proposing. Today, you have in front of you a copy of the existing code language, as well as a copy of the draft code language. Back in July, we went over some of the changes that were proposed to the code. It had intended and proposed, I think, is what I called them at the time, but this draft language is more official this time. It is what will go to the City Council if you provide a positive recommendation this evening. And key amongst those are the removal of the principal permitted use reference. We had a principal permitted use and accessory permitted use, and that was something that caused some issues with interpretation in the past. We also had a change to the minimum lot depth. One of the other kind of bugaboo's that we had with the original code was that there were no minimum lot dimensions for creation of new lots, or the changing of dimensions of lots through boundary line adjustments. We wanted to make sure that there were minimum dimensions on width and depth. For some reason, we had it in there as 25. It should be 50. It makes more sense that way. It's a usable lot, 25 width and 50 depth. And we had some housekeeping about data references that didn't make it through, including the mention of a design review board that doesn't exist. So what we're asking for the Planning Commission to do tonight is review those changes as we have them presented to you in your staff report there, and make a positive recommendation to approve those changes to the code that are attached to the City Council that they will review at a future meeting. And that is all I have for my presentation. I'm open to any questions or comments you might have.
Just to clarify, because I read that last time and this time, but of course, there's a lot to go over, that the changes, the little things that you were talking about there, that's really the only changes from what we saw before and what you saw this time, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I'll close the public hearing at this time, and entertain a motion.
I'll move that we make a positive recommendation to approve the changes to the code as attached in draft form to the City Council at a future public hearing.
We have a motion. Will you have a second?
I will second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's approved. That ends that portion of our public hearing. The next item of business is simply a monthly department update. It's a public meeting. Staff will present a regular update of any planning-related council actions, current plannings, items, long-range planning items, as well as some training items for commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. David Kuhl, Planning Director. I'll go over a few items tonight of highlights of what we've been working on here in the department, as well as with the City Council. And then next, after that, we'll go into a little bit of training that we put together for you, as I know you've made a lot of requests for additional training, and we'll talk about that in a few minutes. For the City Council action update, the mayor has authorized to sign a grant for funding of the active transportation plan through the IRTPO. That's Island County. The project is intended to explore and generate options using the existing street network for active transportation, such as walking and biking, including infrastructure improvements to keep the street open and safe for active transportation. We're going to hire a consultant to help us with that process, and CAC-KMAC, who you all remember, will be back in November to try and get that started up. And so that'll be a real nice thing for the city to be working on. It should help people figure out ways to commute alternatively to work in safe transportation corridors. The City Council also authorized the mayor to sign a Department of Commerce Housing Action Plan grant for the housing action plan implementation. And so as you remember, you all went through the housing action plan through a process of a few years. It was approved, you approved it, and the City Council did. And now this is the next step, to implement the housing action plan through zoning. So we're going out to find a consultant to help us with some of the real challenging zoning code changes that are more involved, things like multifamily tax exemption and a more complicated process. But there's easier ones too that we're going to do as staff. And so Dennis LaFever will be here next time to give you a briefing on our implementation plan of the housing plan, and tell you about the zoning code changes that we're contemplating. Just as an aside, we had set up October for that meeting, and now it's looking like we don't have any other items to talk about in October. So we're going to cancel the meeting in October and stack everything in November to make it more worth your time. That housing action plan briefing is not critical. We just wanted to give you that information, so we think we can push all that off to November. Under the current planning section, last week, we met with a developer on 12 units of three-bedroom apartments at the corner of Heller and Crosby. We had a pre-application meeting with them, so there'll be three buildings and four complexes. And that's a busy corner, so we'll be working through transportation issues and buffering and landscaping and design requirements. And that's the current planning process that you might have been involved in before, but you're not involved in that stuff anymore. Also McKinney Place, which is a series of townhomes. There'll be 20 townhome units, and that's on Third Street. That's going through the final subdivision. That's just been submitted. So those are good projects to have, apartment buildings and townhomes, the middle market, to be able to house lots of people. In the long-range planning section, yeah, like I say, the housing action plan will be postponing till November. Administratively, we're working on our new permitting system, and I gave a briefing to the City Council just recently on the new permit system. We don't have anything physically to show you yet because it's software, and we're going back through the whole process of figuring out what staff does, where they get the paperwork to, how it gets routed, how we would get paid. So there's all those fundamental steps we have to go through first as we're designing the software. Our vendor is Davenport is the company, and we hope to have something later this year to start demoing. And as soon as we get something ready for you, then we'll bring it in and show you how it works. The key factor, we think, in our new permitting system is that it's going to make us more efficient and more effective. Currently, maybe you know, maybe you don't know, but our permit system is an old Eden software that's a financial software that really doesn't do what it's supposed to do for us. And so a lot of our work is still in paper. For example, you'll come into the office and you'll get a permit, and you'll have to come upstairs to pay for it, make copies of it, and bring it back downstairs. That's old school, and we want to update our process. So we'll all be doing things online electronically and being able to pay online. And so there's just a lot of steps we're going to be doing with our new permitting system that we're really excited about. And I'd like to show that to you, and I have something to show you. So we think it'll go live about the first week in February, and training will start in January. So once we get up to speed on it, we'll come in and show it to you. Planning Commission training, we did announce a couple meetings ago that the Department of Commerce Short Course was available, and there were several dates. September 8th is one date, and September 30th is another. Those are virtual trainings of three hours, and most of you have signed up. Thank you for signing up. If you haven't had a chance to, please contact Sarah, and she'll get you signed up. There's more than those two trainings available. And those are real good fundamental trainings in local land use planning. I'll go over the Growth Management Act, which is real key to help you here. Again, the next Planning Commission meeting has been postponed, and so I'm available for any questions you may have.
Yeah, I've got a question for you. We were talking about transportation at the very beginning. Is there any talk of doing an updated traffic study?
The transportation plan, I think, was recently updated, I think, within the last couple of years. I'll check.
David, can I talk to that?
Yeah, you bet.
Yeah, you don't have CAC here, but there is in a work intermobile study that's going on. It's part of the IRTPO or the Island Regional Transportation Organization. So there is in work on that. I've been an advocate for the SR20 roundabouts and traffic issues that have been talked about since 2005. So that is in the works. And then certainly, the Seventh Avenue is the key area they're focusing on, on transportation right now.
Is it still true that the roundabouts are supposed to start in 2027? I think that was a date that was given, a calendar year?
Yeah, I believe that's still the target. David is 2027 for that.
Okay.
And would there be...is there anything being done specifically with the Swan Town area? Is that the idea to have a roundabout there as well, or no?
That's all in the study. I mean, it's been a problem, and it was studied in 2005. So it's been put off and put off and put off. So if they're doing the preliminary, starting to do the preliminary planning right now on the RTPO, that's all done by the state. But the RTPO is doing a kind of intermobile to look at it and see whether there's better ways to distribute the traffic as opposed to doing like what was originally studied in the 2005 study, which was the roundabouts basically at Swan Town, one at Beeksma in Pioneer, and then another one at Barrington. So that was the original proposal there. So they're looking at some more holistic approaches of doing that. And when CAC's back, he's very well schooled in that and speak to it a lot better than David or I can. So that would be a good question to direct to him. He's on the tactical...I'm on the executive, and he's on the tactical technical committee. I guess it's a tactical advisory committee, so he gets into it a lot more detail than I do or David does. So he's a good resource to kind of explain where they're going with that and where it is in the timeframe.
Are there any more questions? If there are no more questions, we'll go into the training portion. I can close this Planning Commission meeting for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you can see on the screen, this is the Planning Commission training. Generally speaking, it's the Oak Harbor Municipal Code. You can change the slide, please. I can. It's changing yours. To the right. There we go. Cool. So as you know, the Planning Commission is made up of seven members on three-year terms, and the Planning Commission shall serve in an advisory capacity to the mayor and the City Council, and shall have all the powers and perform each and all the duties specified in Chapter 35A dot 63 RCW, together with any other duties specified by the City Council or state law. So the City Council can ask you to do certain things. It's just mainly on a case-by-case basis. City Council also specified the Planning Commission duties are found in the Oak Harbor Municipal Code Title 18, under Planning, especially Chapter 1804, and Planning Commission, Chapter 1815, and Comprehensive Plan, Chapter 18.20. So if you're searching around, take a look at those particular sections to see your particular authority. The Commission makes recommendations to the City Council on a wide variety of matters to land use. These matters are legislative in nature, i.e. those that apply to community-wide, such as comprehensive plan amendments and zoning code amendments. And we'll talk a little bit about the difference between what you used to do and what you do now. So to define legislative matters, those are those that help establish citywide or district-wide policies and regulations. Examples of these include comprehensive plan amendments, an adoption of a new master plan, for instance, or a subarea plan, or amendments to the zoning code. So a subarea plan might be a special plan, maybe an overlay in an older part of town that you're looking to try and make changes in. Those kinds of long-range documents are something that you can work on. This is an example of the old process versus the new process. It's a little harder for you to read because when you put a lot of this stuff on a slide, it's kind of hard to tell, but we'll go through it. As you can see, on the old side is on the left side under building permit, if you can see on the left-hand column. In the old process, the building official made the decision, and then if you look to the box to the right of that, the hearing examiner was the appeal authority. And then after that, it was appealed to Island County Superior Court. If you look over at the new process, building permit, building official in the second box, hearing examiner in the third box, and Island County Superior Court. So that hasn't changed at all. Over here in the left-hand column, under old process, the short plat, the Development Services Director makes the decision, and that's also appealed to the hearing examiner. Onto the Island County Superior Court. And if you look over here at the new process, short plat, Development Services Director again makes the decision, the hearing examiner is the appeal authority, and Superior Court makes an appeal decision. So again, that one hasn't changed either. This last one here of items that have not changed, it's conditional use permit, and those are usually your larger ones, go to the hearing examiner, and hearing examiner is also the final decision, and could be appealed to Island County Superior Court. And that's the same over here in the new process, identical. Larger condition use permits go to the hearing examiner and on to Superior Court. What I want to highlight is the last three, and that's over on the left-hand side under preliminary plat. That would go theoretically in the old process to the Planning Commission, and then it went on to the City Council. So you probably remember those steps back in the older days. This really wasn't that long ago. As you see, that was only changed in December of 19. So you're probably just getting used to it, and then we had COVID happen, and so you probably really haven't had a chance to get used to the newer processes. Then you go to the right-hand side, preliminary plat now goes to the hearing examiner. And that goes on to the Superior Court. So that's all been changed, so you don't see preliminary plats anymore. Plan residential developments, that's your PRDs, your variable subdivision activity. Planning Commission used to deal with that, then the City Council would see it, and then on to the Superior Court. Today, on the right-hand side, you see the PRD goes to the hearing examiner right away, and then on to appeal at Superior Court. So that's a big change for you. You don't see the PRDs, you know, where you used to get in and negotiate back and forth, is the trade-offs of what was different about an old subdivision where you could change a new subdivision and add flexibility. That's what staff works with, with the hearing examiner. And so unfortunately, they've moved that into the hearing examiner probably because it's based on law. You meet certain conditions, and you meet certain findings, and you go on to the hearing examiner, whereas I think most of the state has gone to the hearing examiner because it's a quasi-judicial process, and I think it's viewed as perhaps maybe more fair to applicants. Not that this Planning Commission was a problem, but in some places that could happen, you could see. Last column down here, site plans. Some of your site plans would go to the hearing examiner. Looks like that one still goes to the hearing examiner over here. But then it went to City Council, I think, under the old process, and now it just goes hearing examiner and then on to Superior Court. So the reason you're not seeing the things you used to see is because the process has been changed fairly recently. Next slide, please. Oh, I can do that, too. This is in our code. Go ahead, question?
David, the hearing examiner, what are his qualifications?
Usually, the hearing examiner is a lawyer. We currently use Sound Law Center based in Seattle, and a couple of real good attorneys work for them, and they hear our cases, and they help coach us if on process. So that's...
So they're educated in land use issues. Okay, I think that's important.
That is.
Thank you.
You bet. So this is type review process five. This is out of our code. It basically goes over the same thing we just talked about, where rezones are made in conjunction with yearly updates of the comprehensive plan. That's something you see in a top type five. Amendment to regulations, land use codes in the comprehensive plan, amendments to the comprehensive plan map, and any subarea plans or planned actions. A planned action is an environmental proactive approach to doing environmental work, and so that's something that you could also get involved in. Type four, and what I'm doing is I'm going from your processes downward, so the most intense, which are legislative, that's what you do, down to type four, which is preliminary plat hearings are heard by the hearing examiner, PRDs, rezones...whoops. Got ahead of ourselves Rezones, amendments to regulations, so those are your zoning code amendments. Those are also going through the hearing examiner. That's the wrong slide. Okay. So rezones are quasi-judicial in nature, and so those go to the hearing examiner. In the old days, in some places, they would go to the hearing examiner and then on to City Council, but that's all changed. Something else is the planned industrial park approval. That's a type four. Preliminary planned business parks are also hearing examiner decisions. And certain site plans in conjunction with Section 1948. So the hearing on those go to the hearing examiner as well. Process three, this is stepping down a little bit further, something you might have been familiar with before. Now, these all go to the hearing examiner as well. Variances, and you're familiar with variances, and conditional uses. So as you can see, a lot of this stuff has changed hands. I just listed this one here under type two. It has all of our administrative type, we shouldn't say administrative, but these are director-level decisions that staff works on. And so you can see short subdivision approvals of nine lots or less, all the way down through under F, administrative shoreline permits, those kinds of things. A little further down, under M, down there, land clearing permits. Above that is landscape approval. Lot of day-to-day stuff. That's the stuff that we do. And so that stuff would never need to go to the Planning Commission or to a hearing examiner. So I just wanted to give you a full lowdown on exactly what processes go through who, so that it makes more sense. And as we move forward, so one of the things I was thinking about doing is, in the code, it requires us to do a annual, let's say, annual plan or annual project list with the Planning Commission, and I'm told that those have been done in the past. I don't think we did, maybe we did one last year, but probably was not quite as involved. So I'd like to do that this year as well, and provide it to you around the first of the year. So you can see all the stuff you've been working on. That concludes the training for tonight. I was going to do something on your work rules, and I decided to postpone that because the document that you operate under was written in 1981. And so I don't know if you knew that or not, but your rules of procedure probably could stand to be updated, so I want to send that out to you in advance of our next meeting. Have you review it, and then we can talk about it at the November meeting. So I don't know if you've taken time to look at those recently, but they're certainly out there for your consumption. So, any questions? Okay. Well, thank you. Well, thank you.
The meeting was already closed, correct?
No.
Okay. All right, well, if there's, if there's no other, uh, questions regarding the training, I know the training has changed, that's quite a bit, you know, over the past, I'm gonna say, two and a half years. Some of the glamour has ta- been taken away, but at the same time, you know, we get, you know, people in here that, uh, that wanna learn, and, you know, the city encourages us all to learn. So I think it's very important, and it more defines our job as well. But I'm in agreement with the, uh, with the hearing officer because, you know, they do have a lot of training, and, and it's very specific. You know, there's a lot of attorneys out there, but not land use attorneys, and they're very specific. So, uh, I think it's a good process. Thank you. Any other comments, or I'll close this public hearing then? Yep.